Did you find the persons to be heard thing?
Mm-hmm.
Great, okay. I call the city council meeting to order for September fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, at seven PM. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Some introductions here. To my left is council members Mark Vanderlinde, Arlene Donahue, Bob Christians, and Tyler Avens, and our city engineer from WSB, Paul Hornby, is at the end. To my right is our interim city administrator, Mike Barone, our finance director, Brian Grimm, our community development director, David Abel, our city attorney, Ron Beatty, and our director of public safety, Paul Falls. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, subtractions?
I think we already made changes.
Um, we didn't really change it, but we did get the additional information on enchanted. Um, but any additions?
Do I, Hugh, I'd like to add something under the business items. Can we, do we do that now, or do we do that later?
No, you would do that now. What would you like to discuss?
You know, I've, uh, I would like under the business items to discuss the mayor's term.
Oh.
And the reason I'm bringing that up is because, uh, in talking to other cities, all the other cities, St. Bonnie, Mound, all the other ones have a two-year term versus a four-year term, and we're one of the few cities that have a four-year term versus a two-year term. And I think it would be beneficial overall. I think it would be...
Can you talk into the mic, Bob?
I think it would be beneficial. Uh, kinda keep, uh, everybody more on their toes and more alert to what's happening in the community. I think there's so many things that have happened in the past that, uh, maybe, uh, could've had better attention of things that have happened in the past. I, and again, the other sound rounding cities are doing two, so I, why are we doing four? I'd like to put it on for discussion.
Okay, so you want to put it under F, under business items?
E.
No, E is King Point Road assessments.
No, it's D.
You didn't get the update. She passed around a new one.
Okay. You did not get the, your one. So that will be number E, or letter E?
Yep, that would be E.
And that'll be the mayoral term. Okay, so we'll add that. Okay, can I have a motion for the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five-oh. Okay, at this point in our meeting is the persons to be heard. Oh, we don't have any persons to be heard this evening. Oh, that's a change.
Yeah.
Alrighty, let's move on to special, this could be a rural wind meeting. Uh, let's move on to special presentations, our thrilling and exciting roundabout video.
Paul, do you want to introduce, or while we kinda cue it up here?
Sure, um, this, in, at the last meeting, we did talk about, um, you know, some of the issues we're having with the roundabout of at King's Point Road and Truck Highway Seven, so we wanted to try to find a video perhaps to use as an educational tool, tool that would be on the city's website, um, and one that was specific to multi-lane roundabouts. That's probably one of the more unique things about this roundabout versus some of the others that are on Highway Seven, and, um, driving them may, uh, be a little bit confusing at times versus a single lane. And, um, I think council member Vanderlinde had a very good point at the last meeting too, where he had mentioned driving large trucks through the, through the multi-lane roundabouts and the technique, and what he had described he did is exactly what he should be doing, is just you, you take and you straddle the line, so you actually take up both lanes on the approach and into the roundabout, uh, so you can maneuver in them. And cars are not, are supposed to yield to those larger trucks. So, this, um, video is one that looks at not only things, you know, how to drive a roundabout. Now, Brian and I were working on this, but my guess is it also shows you what not to do in the roundabout.
Should we dim the lights?
Important concepts of a roundabout is the yield principle. All vehicles must yield to traffic inside the roundabout as well as vehicles exiting. Drivers should only enter after sufficient space is available to maneuver safely into the roundabout. Defensive driving is appropriate in all situations. Make sure you are aware of other vehicles within the roundabout and be alert to drivers entering and exiting. When approaching a multi-lane roundabout, drivers must choose either the left or right lane before entering. The appropriate lane choice is based on the driver's desired exit or intended destination. For the multi-lane roundabout shown in this video, the left lane allows left turns, straight ahead movements, and U-turns only. Allowable right lane maneuvers include immediate right turns or straight ahead movements. In all cases, signs will direct drivers to the proper lane. Drivers using the left lane have the following options: left turns, straight ahead movements, and U-turns. Remember, when driving in the left lane, always maintain your lane position until you Vehicles using the right lane must make an immediate right turn or a straight ahead movement. Remember to maintain your lane position until you exit. For a roundabout to function properly, everyone must follow the rules of the road. As you are about to see, failure to observe these rules will create unsafe conditions for you and other drivers. Before entering, always yield to traffic within the roundabout. Entering without sufficient space will cause an unsafe condition. In this situation, the vehicle in the right lane cuts off the driver in the left lane intending to exit. Be aware of other vehicles in the lane next to you. They may be unaware of your intended exit. Never change lanes while inside the roundabout. This car in the outside lane is attempting an improper U-turn. U-turns are only allowed in the left lane. Some roundabouts are specifically built with truck aprons to accommodate the turning radius of large trucks and trailers. Although truck aprons are provided, drivers should be aware that trucks may straddle both lanes. That is why it is important to never drive adjacent to or pass trucks while maneuvering through a roundabout. If you follow a truck into a roundabout, do not attempt to pass. When emergency vehicles approach, always give them the right of way. If you have not yet entered the roundabout, pull over to the right, allowing emergency vehicles to pass. Never stop while inside the roundabout. Instead, continue to your exit, then pull over to the right shoulder of the roadway, allowing emergency vehicles to maneuver around you. A roundabout crosswalk functions the same as an unsignalized crosswalk. Before entering the crosswalk, pedestrians should always look in the direction of oncoming traffic, find a gap in traffic, and then cross, although you have the right of way. Forcing traffic to stop suddenly can create unsafe conditions for both you and the drivers entering or exiting the roundabout. Most roundabouts include refuge islands, providing pedestrians with a safe route across opposing travel lanes. Bicyclists are encouraged to use crosswalks by walking their bikes. Only experienced bicyclists should ride through the roundabout. If you choose to enter a roundabout, the same rules of the road apply for a bike as an automobile. Now, let's review the key points. As you approach a modern roundabout, remember these basic principles. Yield principle. Yielding to all traffic circulating within the roundabout before entering is the single most important rule. Lane choice. Drivers must make the appropriate lane choices based on their destination before driving through the roundabout. After you enter the roundabout, never overtake other vehicles or change lanes. Slow down. Modern roundabouts are designed for speeds of twenty miles an hour or less. Drivers should be aware of the posted speed limit signs and slow down to safely enter. Large trucks and trailers. Give special consideration to large trucks and trailers. Never pass or drive adjacent to a truck within a roundabout. Driving behind large trucks is preferred. Emergency vehicles. Do not impede emergency vehicles. Pull over to the right if you are not in the roundabout, or move through and exit the roundabout to ensure emergency personnel get to their intended destination without undue delay. Pedestrians. Utilize the modern roundabout's refuge island. This allows pedestrians to cross both directions of traffic safely. Bicyclists. Bicyclists should use the pedestrian crosswalk. Only experienced bicyclists should ride through the roundabout. Following these rules of the road will help you drive through a modern roundabout correctly and safely.
Well, thank you. Were we still talking about restriping or not?
At this point, um, I did talk to our design engineer. Um, he has worked with MinnDOT extensively, not only this roundabout, but others. This one has some, some unique characteristics to it, but, um, before they would consider restriping, um, MinnDOT wants to see how these are gonna perform, and it's probably a little too soon to do that.
Okay.
And I know at the last meeting, there was some discussion about some of the frustrations that, um, people have heard of or experienced within the roundabout. And I think from MinnDOT's standpoint, I can't speak for them, but it's my opinion that they're gonna want us to wait a little longer after talking to our designer on them to see how they happen operationally. Oftentimes, MinnDOT will look at incidents such as crashes. Are there more crashes or fewer crashes? Um, and they'll look at that as one factor. Now, the one thing with this roundabout is we don't have pedestrians on the surface. That's, at least, a positive with that one, so...
Okay, any other questions about the roundabout? Okay, I believe Brian is up, or if you like.
Yeah, and I'm going to just make a few comments before Brian actually kinda dives into the budget presentation. Um, as you know, tonight, we're going to pass a preliminary levy to, in order to meet the county deadline of September thirtieth, um, and then slated for tonight is a general fund increase of four point one percent, so we thank the council for these increases. Um, I won't really go back and discuss, uh, previous budgets, previous years, but what I am encouraged about is, uh, overall that, you know, our economy has been improving in the last year or two, uh, the city is growing, and then home value prices are trending up, so, uh, this will all help impact, lessen the impact of our, our budget increase going forward in 2015. Um, staff has held about eight budget meetings as we sat down and tried to shape the 2015 budget, and then council of staff have had some very honest and open discussions in the past few months at our special meetings in order to, uh, discuss the 2015 budget. There's still a lot more work to be done in future years. Uh, we have many needs in roads and utilities and other demands that go along with being a growing city, uh, but just, uh, this is council probably already knows, but so the public knows, that city staff is committed to, uh, being effective and efficient with our tax dollars. So, with that, I'll turn it over to, uh, Brian, and he can kinda go through the budget presentation for 2015. Brian?
Sure. Thanks, Mike. I'm Madam Mayor, Councilor. The one thing I just wanted to clarify, I think, um, is the, uh, the four point one percent that, um, Mike referenced, that is our, our preliminary total tax levy increase. That would be the, uh, you know, capital, roads, general fund, operations, everything together, so, um, just wanted to make that clarification. As, like, as Mike's already stated here, um, we have to certify the preliminary levy by, uh, Tuesday, September thirtieth, so that's what we're looking to take action on tonight. Our 2015 budget goals that, um, we've sort of tried to stay honed in on is, you know, obviously, the, the first one is to ensure the city's financial stability. I think we've done a really good job over the past several years, I mean, or, you know, as far as making sure we have healthy fund balances and, and balancing, um, our, our needs there, um, addressing capital improvement, um, needs, and, and just making sure our, our capital improvements, being that, I think this, this budget does that. Um, you know, every year, we look at our, our staffing and benefit level, levels in conjunction with our service levels to make sure that, um, um, we're, we're doing good there, and one of the things that, um, is outlined in the memo is the, uh, the mid-year, um, add-back of the, the lieutenant position, the police lieutenant position, and then the, uh, funding the pavement management plan, which is important, I think, to, to all of us, so... So, basically, what the PowerPoint's doing here is summarizing, this was, um, pages, you know, four through fifteen of, of the, uh, of the packet. Here is the, uh, you know, council, I know you've seen these slides, you know, a lot of this is for the, uh, the public at, at home here, but, um, you can see our, our previous, uh, couple of years, few years, from two thousand twelve to two thousand fourteen, our, our levy has stayed, uh, flat. Um, what, uh, the changes in 2015 are, um, basically, uh, the debt fund levy is going up to, to fund some equipment purchases for, through an equipment certificate, and then the other, um, major change is a hundred thousand for additional road maintenance, trying to phase in, and I'll talk about that a little later, our, our pavement management plan. So, um, those are the, the two main changes, and, and what the, um, basically, the bottom line is that the total net levy is, uh, at three million nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, with, once the fiscal disparities of a hundred and one thousand's taken off, so, um, but I believe that number is actually still, I mean, I, we show the trend later, but it's, it's lower than two thousand ten, I think it's even lower.
I think it's down to two thousand six.
Six, yeah, I think.
This tax will be at two thousand six.
Yeah, it's either oh-six or oh-seven, yeah, sorry, it's right around that, that timeframe.
It's at twenty.
Yep, yep. And, yeah, I mean, here's just a, I guess, a graph that shows the last, you know, back to two thousand nine, that was, uh, when our, our tax levy was at, I suppose, for lack of a better term, I guess, the highest point, or, so you can see, we've, um, just, as we just talked about, you know, even by, uh, going back to right around four million, we're still, you know, six hundred thousand or so lower than we were in two thousand nine, so I think the, the city's done a very good job of, um, doing that, but knowing that we need to, um, invest in, in a few things this year and make just a, what I would call a reasonable levy increase. In conjunction with that, our, our, our general fund is our biggest share of our expenditures, and, uh, that still is below, you know, pre-two thousand nine levels as far as, um, our general fund, uh, back then was a little over four point five million, and we're, we're still below that as far as our, you know, spending on our, our police and our streets and all those, you know, general fund activities that, um, you know, our, our main core services we provide. This goes back into, um, this is from our last audit, you know, so it's through two thousand thirteen, and it, um, shows that we've been in that fifty to sixty percent range as far as what's called our general fund, fund balance reserve, so, um, state audit recommends being between thirty-five and fifty percent, so we're actually a little above that, which, I mean, so we do have a, you know, a healthy fund balance and, um, able to, we've been able to, you know, use, allocate that for some different things as far as some additional roads or not having to levy for some, you know, equipment in, in, in years past, so we've, we've done that, and I think we've, uh, been judicious with that, so... Here's, um, our CIP, and you can see, um, I think we're gonna spend a little, um, as far as our capital purchases for, like, you know, trucks for public works and, and police squads and such, so we're budgeted to spend about three hundred and seventy thousand in two thousand, um, fifteen here. Some of these other, uh, amounts, obviously, are per the plan for twenty fifteen and nineteen, will be looked at each year as far as some need, um, you can see it's ebbed and flowed a little bit. When the economy was, um, a little slower, we tried to, um, cut back a little bit and just, you know, just like, you know, everyone did, I guess, so, um, we're just, uh, looking at, uh, making some investments in our equipment again, just to make sure we stay on that proper replacement schedule. Phase into the pavement management plan, what we're trying to do is get to this nine hundred thousand here in two thousand nineteen. Right now, we spend about three hundred and fifty thousand as of two thousand fourteen on our pavement ma- management plan, so we're, what we're doing in that, the ties into that levy sheet I was showing earlier, as far as, um, trying to up that about a hundred thousand each of the next, um, few years, and then even a hundred and twenty-five thousand after that, and I think, um, that's a prudent way to, to get to where we need to be, and we also have some MSA, municipal state aid dollars we get, so we just have to balance tax levy dollars with other, um, financing sources such as state dollars to, uh, make sure we're staying on top of our roads. Here's, uh, I guess, in, almost taking the previous slide and summarizing it into one slide as far as, as our tax levy, you can see it's, um, went down from two thousand ten and stayed the same, and now there's that, you know, basically about four percent increase up, and, um, one thing, I know Mike touched on it earlier, of that four percent increase, roughly about half, you know, or close to two percent is almost, um, made up of capturing our growth, our new homes within the city, so really, you're not, existing homeowners shouldn't see, you know, that full four percent, it should be something closer to, you know, if they had a, the, the median valuation increase should be something closer to two, so, I just wanted to point that out, but this just shows, um, also our, um, you know, reserves. We've, we've been able to use some of our reserves to keep our tax levy, you know, manageable, or, you know, reasonable and, and, um, but, um, also then keep our, um, our fund balance percentage, knowing that, you know, there's, we wanna not just have that keep building and building, so it's, it's a balance between all of those items, and I think we've done a good job of, um, maintaining that balance. This, I think this is a very important graph, um, as far as what people were paying in, in property taxes in two thousand ten, I mean, this is taking a property that was valued at five hundred thousand in two thousand ten, and we know that property experienced some valuation decreases, I mean, that was just the way, um, you know, the housing market was going, so, but we also did decrease our, our tax levy during those times, so you can see that that property owner, even with the, um, you know, the slight increase for the twenty fifteen, is, is basically paying a hundred and seventy-five dollars less than what they were paying in two thousand ten, so, um, obviously, that five-year trend, most, you know, more people have more money in their pockets, or have paid less for city taxes based on what the city's, um, done, you know, done the last several years. This is just more of a year-to-year trend, what, what people, what the residential properties are seeing, when, with working with the county, um, assessor's office, the, the average valuation increase is about five point five percent, so if they have that valuation increase, then with the, uh, the tax levy that is proposed, you can see their value will go up between twenty fourteen and fifteen, and then here's the respective tax amounts page, so you can see it's, you know, for the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar property, you know, it's basically a difference of what, you know, they'll see a twenty-two dollar increase on their, their property taxes, you know, less than two dollars a month, so, um, that slide just shows it with a little, if you have more of a larger increase, but, I mean, that's just the way the property tax formula works. Um, some of our main assumptions or commitments, you know, in our budget, some things were, you know, sort of, I guess, locked into our contractually, and we have our mound fire and our St. Bonnie fire, which both had pretty, you know, modest increases there. Um, we have our labor contracts with, you know, our unions as well as our non-unions, and, you know, we're estimating for the salaries and, you know, insurance and stuff, about seventy thousand there. I referenced earlier the mid-year start of the staff police lieutenant, and that's, um, you know, we've discussed that at the last several meetings, um, our funding sources for our capital improvements, the pavement management plan, and then, uh, I think under, um, staff reports, we've scheduled out, uh, later in the agenda meetings, talking about, um, the surface water, water, sewer, because of those individual utility funds or enterprise funds are, you know, separate from the, the tax levy funds or the, the general funds, and we'll be talking about those in October and November here. I guess, yeah, just to summarize what was in the packet, um, we want to improve the resolution, I guess we got that under, under business items here in a minute, um, by the, the deadline. We've had multiple meetings, as Mike referenced, with, um, both at the staff level and on staff and council, um, I think we had a pretty good consensus at that September second meeting. Basically, the main components of the increase are, are the roads, you know, it's about two point six percent, and then the, uh, capital is about one and a half percent. We've, the general fund, we pretty much kept flat by using some, you know, reserves and, and doing some, you know, saving where we could and, and that type of thing, so, um, and then the last point is that, um, obviously, this is the ceiling we're setting, so, um, whatever, the final budget, you know, can even still come up again, you know, at, um, between now and, um, one of the agenda items we'll set is the, the public comment date of, um, in December, but, um, this is the maximum we're setting, so, uh, it can be, you know, stay the same or be reduced, but it can't be increased between now and when the final budget levy are adopted, so, that's what I have for the presentation, so, council has any comments or...
Any comments or questions?
I think it looks good.
Okay, so otherwise, yeah, I guess we'll have consent agenda, and we'll be back in a minute here to, there's a few, uh, action items that we have, so...
Brian, I, I think one of the things that we have to do is, in discussing the budget here, when we talk about a four percent increase in real numbers, uh, you know, in real numbers, it's minimal, and I think we also have to show the fact, as you did on that slide. Uh, for years and years, our taxes in Minatrista have increased year by year by year by year up until two thousand ten. In two thousand ten, as you showed in the slide, they started to go level out and actually go down. So what you're asking for right now with this increase, still with the increase, correct me if I'm wrong, but still with this increase, our taxes per resident, my tax that I'm paying to the city of Minatrista is still less than it was four years ago.
Oh, definitely.
Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, unless you had some major, the only people that wouldn't be able to say that is if they moved into the last four, yeah, you know, obviously, they weren't here at that time, or if they did some major improvements to their, you know, property or something.
Right, right, but I mean, as far as valuation goes, so...
But across the board, yeah, I mean, if you just had your house, you're still, you know, didn't make any major changes to it, yeah, I mean, they would, a vast majority are paying, yeah, less.
If I didn't know how the taxes were calculated, and I was a resident, and all at once I seen somewhere, I seen in the paper that there's a four percent increase, I'm gonna go, what the heck, four percent increase? But in reality, I could live with that and I'd have no problem with that if I realized that in reality, in real numbers, it's probably zero, at most two percent, and still less than it was four years ago.
It's less than it was in two thousand seven.
It's less than it was in two thou- I know up until a point in time-
So, seven years ago.
It raised, it was, it taxes, my taxes went up every year. I've been living here for twenty years. My taxes have gone up until every year, and I didn't really notice a difference until about two thousand ten, where it started to level off or go down. So the, the key is, in our job, is to communicate the whole story. I don't want another water issue thing where there was misinformation put out, information that wasn't correct, or the rest of the story. I want to make sure the information that we put out is accurate, so we don't have this second guessing and all this misinformation that was printed in the paper and, and other places that have gone around. That hurt us. We need the facts. We need the facts showed, and how you did it, and you did a great job here, I commend you on that, 'cause you showed the chart.
Yeah, no, and that's from a staff perspective, I mean, I tried to, whoever, anyone I talked to, if they try to say my taxes are too high or whatever, I pull out these slides and, or, you know, or different information and explain to them that our taxes have gone down, and sometimes if they try to, you know, the tax rate is different than the actual, I mean, this is real dollars.
Right, right. And so you understand what I mean. I seen in the paper at least six times, five million dollars on the water treatment, which is a bunch of crap, we all know that, it never was, but I seen it in the paper six times. I want to make sure that we're showing again here that the story is presented correctly, that really, what does that mean? It still means I'm paying less than I did four years ago.
Definitely.
More than four years ago.
More than four years ago. So that's our important part, that we need to communicate that to our residents and our taxpayers who are paying the bill.
Yeah, one, the one thing I always try to get across too is that, and people sometimes mistake or misunderstand, they're tot- we control basically about a quarter of the tax bill.
Right, you got the school, you got the county, you got everything else.
And the county, and the county.
The water shit.
But we're talking about the city.
Yeah, yeah, our, yeah, yeah, if you look at, when you get your actual statement that comes in November, look at, uh, what you're paying for the city in comparison to the other ones and look at a piece here.
And we've done a great job, no question, and you did a good job of presenting that. Now we just have to get that to the public, to the taxpayer, and communicate that way.
And I like the fact that you went over the values, because the one thing that our residents have told us over and over is if we're gonna do a tax increase, it's about roads, they're okay with it.
Yeah, and that's been on too, and we're looking here that we're taking a hundred thousand, we've got comments, and I've had comments, and I know the rest of us have had comments, the roads are in the best shape they've ever been, ever, in Minatrista, but yet, we still are gonna increase it by another hundred thousand dollars to even prove it better. So anybody who's had anything about the roads, I mean, it's, it's great, I mean, we're doing what our people want, we're listening, and that's what we want to get across.
Alrighty, so we'll pick that up again once we get through the consent agenda. So let's move along to the consent agenda. I do want to remove the meeting minutes, um, A and B, and, um, there's just, were a few things that need to be corrected, and can we bring them back to the next meeting?
Yes, we can, Mayor.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on the consent agenda they want to pull?
No.
Nope. Alrighty, um, so, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda without item A and B.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five oh. Okay, now we're on to public hearings, which there are none.
What the planning commission's discussion centered around was, it's harder to change, you know, the ordinance like this all the time as opposed to the fee schedule, something you do every year, and they had concerns about, you know, actually charging people for something like that, so I wanted to more recommend that being the fee schedule, which again is something we do every year.
Okay.
This has been a particular problem at Hunter's Crest.
Correct.
I think they did a good job on it. Do you guys have any suggestions or comments? Well, since, I'll make a motion to approve it, as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and so now we need to authorize publication, a ordinance four twenty by title and summary.
So, a moment.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Okay, number C, or letter C, accepting quote for the demolition of structures on the Gillespie property at fourteen twenty Westwood Drive.
Thanks again, Madam Mayor, members of council, as you may recall, we, the council has been exploring several different areas in which would be the, the most cost-effective method in removing the, the structures on the Gillespie property that was donated to the city for park, for a public park purpose. The last method that we explored was asking the mound fire department if a controlled burn would be a viable option, after their analysis of the site, they can, they concluded that, that this site would not be appropriate for them to do a controlled burn from, from a safety standpoint and a number of other reasons, that has led us to where we are today with the traditional demolition of the structures that are on that site. Staff solicited quotes from three different vendors, all of which who did submit, the quotes range with the high quote at thirty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars and a low quote from Pride Construction and Escavating at seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Staff is looking for a, a motion to adopt a resolution, accepting the low quote from Pride Construction and Escavating to do the demolition of the structures on the Gillespie property, and just from an update standpoint, we did get the asbestos surveyor in, in the property Wednesday of last week, so the samples have been taken, they've been sent out to the testing facility, we have not received the results back yet, but that, that progress is in motion, and once we get the survey back, we'll be looking to get quotes on having a company actually get the asbestos out of the site before the demolition can occur.
Okay, any questions? Looking for motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution, accepting a quote from Pride Construction for demolition and removal of the Gillespie property.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining, because it's a relative.
Oh, okay, four oh, one abstention.
I wouldn't want to be accused of doing anything unethical.
All right, now, number D is approve the final sale of the two thousand fourteen A bonds, refunding bond issues two thousand five A and two thousand seven A, I believe this is Mr. Hagan.
And Mr. Grimm.
Yep, yeah.
And Mr. Grimm, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay, yeah, then a mayor, members of the council, I'll introduce Todd Hagan from our, our financial consultant, Ellers and Associates, he'll be here to talk about, I think everyone's got one of these at their desk, so that's the main thing, we'll be talking off of there is, versus the information that's in the packet, this is updated for the, the bid results and the really good savings we got on this issue and all that, I guess Todd, talk on the, the details of the report.
Thanks, Brian.
Great.
Yeah, don't take the wind out of my sails.
Yep, yeah.
I see it sunny out behind me now, so it's good, it was a great day to sell bonds today, again, Todd Hagan from Ellers and Associates, your bond consultant at a beautiful downtown Roosevelt, you know, today, by, up to ten o'clock, we received bids on these refinancing bonds, I was here on, Becky was here on July twenty-first to set this bond sale up, to come back with bids for today. We're refinancing a two thousand five A bond and a two thousand seven A bond for an interest cost savings, so we're keeping the term the same and not extending anything or, or shortening up the bond issue, just basically apples to apples on this because the market is so good to sell bonds, and we want you folks to enjoy those savings, and I think you did today. We received six bids, kind of to cut to the chase here as far as the bond issue is concerned, we're happy with the six bids, if you look in a couple pages in, you'll see the, how the bidding came, came out, the winning bid was City Securities Corporation out of Indianapolis, Indiana, and that came in at a one point eight four nine three true interest rate, the second bid, the cover bid, second to the best bid was at Baird out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, at one point nine seven percent, and then United Bankers Bank out of Bloomington, local here at two point oh two percent, and Northland Securities out of Minneapolis, again, local at two point one seven percent, the, the next one is Raymond James and Associates out of St. Petersburg, Florida, I think Brian and I talked that they've purchased some of your bonds in the past, didn't win this one, two point three five percent, but appreciate their participation, and a place called Basque Incorporated out of Dallas, Texas, at two point five three percent, so if you kind of put that into an interest difference by bidding this out and not just going with one, and it might have been the, the last bid there, you, you know, you're sort of saving a little over forty-six thousand dollars there, too, by, by bidding out the, the project itself, so we wouldn't know who, who was all interested in it if we didn't go out for bids, so kudos to the council to go and send this out, because it's a pretty vanilla deal out in the market, and it's with your fantastic double A plus rating and with the stable outlook, that really attracted some bids from, you know, outstate, obviously, so it was neat to see six bids, and that's a lot of bids, you know, considered in this market. So before we get to the rating part, we had the ability to adjust the bond issue today, too, that best bid gave us interest rate that actually is higher than the re-offering yield, and we talked about a premium bid before, so they did offer a premium bid, and you can see the re-offering yield is lower than the rate, what they did is gave us more money, actually almost eighty thousand dollars more than we needed, we don't need any more than we need on a refunding bond, and they didn't really take any discount or, or basically any fee, so in exchange for a little higher interest rate, we actually lowered the bond issue by about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and that includes some prepaid special assessments that Brian and I talked about this morning, that have kind of accumulated, I think, in the two thousand seven A debt account, and this is a good time to shake that tree and, and use those, you know, put the, put that cash to work, basically, at this point, so when you add up the cash contribution from the city and some, you know, no fee basically for the underwriter, and they gave us more money than we needed, and the cost of issuance, yes, went down at least twenty-four hundred bucks, and I'm sure that was us, that, when you add all that up and subtract it, we lowered the bond a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, so it's not a million, two forty-five anymore, it's a million eighty, so, and that basically equated to a higher savings overall, instead of seventy-four thousand dollars and some change overall, over the life of the bond issue, it's a little over a hundred thousand dollars now, so it's nice to break that hundred thousand dollar mark, and so that, that helped considerably in the bond issue, so I think basically, too, you followed the market, because if you look at the bond buyer trend between then and now, it's gone down about fourteen basis points, and that's really what your, your true interest cost reflected was like fifteen basis points, so, you know, you're, you're striking while the iron's hot here, and the rates have been going down, and, and that's great, because we don't know, you know, when they're gonna go up, when and if they're going to, but crystal ball says they're probably gonna go up sooner or later, how's that for being specific? So that, that was, that was a great, great bond sale, and that's sort of how we adjusted it, I mean, the closing is September eleventh, and, you know, we take care of calling in the old bonds and substituting these for the new ones. So we had a really, really good rating call a week ago today, at about three o'clock, with Mike and Brian on the phone and a couple representatives from Standard and Poor's, I was on the phone, and Becky from Ellers and Associates were on the phone as well, and it was about, I don't know, forty-five minute to an hour conference call, but we do load them up with as much information ahead of time as possible in order to, you know, minimize the questions on the rating call, and, and it really was, it really tracked their new methodology and criteria that they put into play after your two bond issues for, you know, the roundabout and, and Kings Point Road there, so we really didn't know what we were gonna get as far as a, a bond rating, but you're, you know, one notch below a triple A already, and you basically have the same rating the state of Minnesota has, so you're a double A plus, and, and you're right at the top, and you did stay there to cut to the chase on that, you're a double A plus, stable rating, if you look at the report, there are some bullet points that just sort of summarize, summarize how this played out, you have a very strong economy with, you know, Minneapolis and St. Paul being right around the corner here, very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity, providing very strong cash levels, strong management conditions, adequate budgetary performance, and, and you've got some weak debt and contingent liability positions, I think that's what's keeping you down from a triple A, but it's really nice getting on a rating call with, you know, strong financial management, the city of Minatrista, it's really fun to, to talk to these, these folks and kind of talk about the lake area, the western Hennepin County kind of economy, which is, you know, starting to kind of obviously pick up before the rest of the metro areas, and, and high income levels and things like that, but, you know, you, with the growing community, you also have, you know, more, more bonds to issue, you know, and, and that's sort of gonna keep you down probably from that one notch triple A until, until some of those bonds drop off, and/or it doesn't hurt to refinance them either, you know, so we do what we can in that, in that regard, so you are, you know, if you look at, they do hint a little bit in the, in the report itself, and, you know, what does very strong mean, you know, when you look at, at this, and you can read the paragraphs in between the lines, but, you know, very strong economy, that's, that's really the highest level you can get, very strong budgetary flexibility is, is the highest they, they give you, very strong liquidity, and that's really, really available cash, you know, and that's the highest, highest they can give you, I mean, to back up to the budgetary flexibility, that's, you know, that's basically, you know, your general fund balance is what, is what that is, so flexibility and liquidity, those are indications of how much money you folks have set aside, which offsets, obviously, any of the, any of the, the lower, the lower scales here, adequate budgetary performance, that's in the middle, you know, that's right in the middle, it's probably a, maybe, you know, I don't work for Standard and Poor's, it might be a three, you know, and, and a one's the best, right, and the five's probably the worst, so it's a scale from one to five, so, you know, probably maybe a three, you're right in the middle there, and that's basically kind of how you operate throughout the year, you know, and they don't subtract, you know, for one-time capital expenditures, things that are unforeseen like that, planned a little bit, but, you know, if you have a capital outlay, that's a one-time snapshot, it's not a, it's not a, you know, a penalty, but that really is kind of the roadmap of, you know, some of the takeaway from here is just how, how you operate, you know, throughout, throughout the year, and I think that's what they mean by budgetary performance. Management conditions, strong means, you know, almost the highest, so you're, you know, you're probably almost a number one there, and, and then basically the strong institutional framework, that's just the city of Minatrista being in the state of Minnesota, which is different than other states, and you have, you know, different opportunities here than other states, and it's for a population's greater than twenty-five hundred people, so, you know, not a lot you can do about the economy, and not a lot you can do about the institutional framework, that is, is what it is. So, yeah, it was a great bond sale, I just wanted to summarize that, you know, we don't have Standard and Poor's coming over here every day to, you know, review their report, and we just do, try to do the best we can to interpret what, what they've got, you know, they're out of Chicago, they, they put this stuff in a, in a machine, they have a committee, they talk about you, they try to get as much positives to offset any negatives as they can, and they don't want to set you for a fall either, so it's, that's a great rating, and it was a great bond sale, so.
Thank you.
And if, the, the action would be to pass the resolution, bond resolution from Kennedy and Graven, if you don't have any questions, but I'm here for questions, too, if you folks have any, so.
Any questions?
Yeah, so just the one thing that, as Todd noted, so the resolution, that was in your packet, had the one million two hundred and forty-five thousand, that's been lowered based on those items, you know, he referenced to.
One million eighty.
One million, yep, eighty thousand, so I guess, yeah, the action would be the resolution authorizing issuance, awarding the sale, prescribing the form and details, and providing for the payment of one million eighty thousand, general obligation, refunding bond, series two thousand fourteen A.
So, a moment.
Second.
Did you have a question?
Do we need to do a public hearing?
No.
I think we should be very proud of the fact that we're one notch short of a triple A rating, I think that's due to our good staff.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and Brian, our awesome financial.
If I, if I had a hat, I'd take it off to you, thank you, it's a team effort, so.
Well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a quick signature from?
Yes.
Madam? Our signature, please, the county.
I'm sure. Thank you, Todd.
Thanks so much for the business and the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we're going to do the, adopt the reimbursement resolution regarding the water treatment plant project.
Oh, it's Madam Mayor, council, I'll take that one, also, this item is on pages one sixty-seven to one sixty, or one sixty-five to one sixty-seven of your packet, this came about just, you know, with the, the water treatment plant project moving forward, we do have a reimbursement resolution that's on file, but I think it's, it's good to update every so often, and especially with a more specific project, you know, like, like this, so what's attached in your, in the packet on pages one sixty-six and one sixty-seven is a resolution that we prepared with the help of our bond counsel, Kenny and Graven, that basically allows us the ability to reimburse ourselves, and we're planning to use the Minnesota PFA loan process, and you'll know about, more about that in the coming month or so here, but right now our estimated maximum principal amount is about sixteen million, that can be changed as we move along in the process, but we just need, need to have this adopted and have this on file, so we make sure we reserve the right to reimburse ourselves for, for the project, so.
In the event that we're bonded by the state, and we've already spent the dollars.
Correct, yes.
Yes, okay. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the reimbursement resolution regarding the water treatment plant project.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five oh. Okay, our next item is claims. Did we change kennel providers?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, no, we have not.
Okay, I just didn't remember JP Cook, it says kennel charges.
I would have to.
It's on page one seventy-one.
You should, I think that's cross.
Yeah, yeah, just, I didn't recognize the JP Cook.
JP Cook is not the, the kennel that we use, I don't know why that name is on there, it must be some reference, it's a, that's the dog license, I think, is the, might be the name that it was put under, I'm not sure, I'd have to research that.
Okay.
But we still use the same kennel services.
That could be purchasing of new dog licenses, and the number, the finance number comes up as kennel charges.
Oh. Oh.
You know what I'm saying? It's in the same category, it's all the dog, really.
It might possibly be the supplies that we use to issue dog licenses, that might be the name of the company.
That's probably what it is.
And it probably just comes out of the kennel charge line item in the budget, would be my best guess without researching it.
That was my only question.
I have a question about check number oh-five-six-two-nine-five to Aconia Ford Mercury. I know in the CIP plan, there was a talk about a truck for Public Works. And I see here we have spent thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars for a two thousand fifteen Ford Super Duty truck. When was this authorized?
It was originally in the 2014 budget and then we also had on the last meeting, we had the, on the consent agenda, we had to amend the Public Works CIP. We had sold the Greater for a hundred thousand more than, for twenty thousand more, for a hundred and twenty thousand versus a hundred. So, this was one of the items on that list of that agenda item was to, I think originally Public Works had budgeted for a truck that was less than the thirty-eight thousand, but they found that it wasn't what they really needed. So, with that extra funds, they're just pretty much taking that money from the Greater sale and applying it, and they had a list of items that was at that last council meeting. So, that's, this was one of those items on that list.
Any other questions? Look for a motion?
Motion to approve the claims.
I'll second it.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, council reports, we are going to meet with Dr. Byer tomorrow
Correct.
To discuss possibly using the WRA park as a potential water treatment plant site. That's my only update, Mark?
I have none.
Arlene?
I have nothing.
Bob?
In going and looking at the WRA with the possibility of a water plant, I have to get a little closer here. Looking at the WRA for the water, centralized water plant, I know the location would be really good. I don't think it's going to work. I think we need to look at the property that the city purchased four or five years ago. I think there's enough property here that we could take a look and see if it's more workable to put it on the city property here versus that WRA. I just don't believe, based on what I know about the WRA, and obviously, as you know, I've been extremely large supporters of that for years. I think we're going to have to take a look at it. We can meet with Dr. Byron, but I think that's going to be a dead issue.
Okay, well, the second selection for a site was this campus, so.
A lot of the funding for WRA is handled by my family, so I don't think that's going to happen.
Would it affect the, I don't think that it would affect what goes on there, it would be on the back end.
Yeah, no, I understand, but I think we, it would be highly controversial. I would really like to take a look at some of the property that the city owns that was purchased back when the facilities were built, the public safety building and the building that was worked. I think it's from a central standpoint, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it would be feasible to do, there's enough land to do it. Am I correct in saying that?
I think there's probably enough land at either site, I don't think it's the size of the land that we're looking at. I think when we have our meeting tomorrow and then when Bolton Make, they're going to do soil borings. I mean, I think a lot of it may be determined for us by what we get as results, so.
Okay.
But yeah.
I'm not trying to throw mud on it here, I'm just letting you know that I think that's going to be an uphill battle going with WRA.
All right, so now it's, and Tyler?
No updates.
Any updates? Okay, staff reports?
Just a few things to talk about, kind of heard it brought up a couple of times. We did have a kickoff meeting on October eighth with members of Bolton Make, WSB, and city staff and city council member, Mayor Hunt being there. The purpose of the meeting on the eighth of August was to kind of talk about the overall scope of the water treatment project. As you heard, there's a couple of sites that are under consideration, that's to be determined. The other things we talked about were where we might have to put the, or figure out the routes for the piping, size and scale of the actual water plant, a funding mechanism and schedules. And then I did hear from, didn't talk, we traded voicemails, Seth Peterson and I today spoke. And we're going to try to probably have another meeting, I think, next week with the week after, so. So, to be determined on the next meeting from this group. So, it was a good kickoff meeting and so they gave a lay a lot of groundwork here in kind of where we're going to go.
Enchanted Lane.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We did talk about this at previous meetings, I thought maybe the best way to go about this is put this in a memo, in a staff report. But at least in the process and looking at, number one is removing the temporary roadway that's out there today. And I think I loosely said we want to get that done before freeze-up, obviously I might be able to get that done much sooner than that. We are contacting contractors, we've tried to drum up some interest. The thing with the contractors, we need to make sure they have access to trucks and that they have equipment to remove the rock. And we have to find some of those that are interested in actually doing the work. That's been one of the biggest tasks, I know there's two of them for sure that are interested, so I have those on my list already, and I'm looking for others. The, so after we get the rock removed, then we have to go through and take a look at what the pavement condition is underneath it. Now, determine whether or not we can just go out and patch it and, I'll say limp it through the winter and then maybe readdress it in the spring after, during pot hole season. And then maybe some of those dollars that we have set aside from FEMA, so we try to address some of these road repairs, we can apply that to a permanent fix. So, there may be some funding we can offset there to do that. And then look at here over the late fall, early winter, look at the feasibility and so forth of making permanent repairs in the floodplain. And if the council wants us to look at the entire project with Shorewood from border to border and beyond, we'll do that as well, we'll work with Shorewood to do that. So, that's the synopsis of how we're approaching the project and we do hope to have a quote package out here in the next week, so.
So, is this something that our Public Works can help with?
We did talk about that, right now they've got so many things going on, they did not think that their staff could handle it.
Okay.
One of the difficulties with this project is, once they start, they need to keep moving.
Right.
And trying to do it in an efficient manner, we did talk about even, I believe one of the residents, I think Mr. Gropny, have even mentioned that taking it off at night to disturb as little traffic as possible. There's a lot of traffic that goes through there.
We know.
And in order to try, when, once the contractor is working, they're going to pull traffic back while they can load a few trucks and then backdrag the material so it can ramp it, so cars can get up and get out. Or do we look at working with the neighbors adjacent to each of these zones and do it at night? It'd be a noise issue there, but less traffic. If you have a preference, I'd certainly like to know what your thoughts are on that.
Well, what do the neighbors think?
Well, I think I've had at least one say that maybe nighttime would be a good time to do it. I, my preference would be likely to be able to look at it during the daytime. So, if something does go awry, we have Public Works on staff that can help address some issues, we have engineering on staff that can address issues. So, for me, doing it during the day is probably a better alternative and then less disturbing to the neighbors at nighttime.
And then we keep the rock, right?
Correct, Public Works wants the rock, they have, they definitely have areas they can use that rock.
Any other questions? Okay.
I would add to that, if you do have some local contractors, the chair of that also may have an interest and fit that criteria, certainly send that information to me and I'll make sure to quote package when we send them to them.
Do you have any idea how much this is going to cost?
I do not. It's really going to be trucking costs and this could be hourly by the truck. What we do is we'd set up a contract by the cubic yard, so that we can track how many loads go out. We don't have to scale, have a scale on hand to weigh the trucks. I think it's just better to come up with an average volume of each truck that's going to be hauling and have it hauled out by the cubic yard, paying by the cubic yard, not worry about the time and materials side of it, but so they'd be hauling it off the island and delivering it here to Public Works.
Would this be included in the cost of repair that people would cover?
Just so we're perfectly clear, at this point FEMA has not included Hennepin County in the declaration. That process is going much slower than we had anticipated, so I'm just pushing forward the information that I have. But at this point, they have not been included and we've been told and told and told that they believe that is going to happen. However, that dollar amount keeps moving around, we've provided our preliminary damage assessments numbers to the county to forward to FEMA. With that said, we don't have a total because Enchanted Lane is by far our most expensive piece and we can't guess. And therefore, those numbers have not been included because we won't know the extent of the damage until that rock is removed. So, certainly if they have not made a declaration or a decision one way or the other, by the time we get the rock removed, we'll be able to push that information forward to them. Unfortunately, they may or may not make that decision prior to getting that rock off of there. But I'll certainly keep you posted, we're hopeful that they will make that declaration, in which case, a lot of the expense, the damage would be reimbursed through the state and federal governments. But if they don't, then that'll be a different issue, but I'll keep you posted when that information becomes available.
Mike, would we need to do another one of those intent to reimburse for this project if it's going to take a while?
We could, I don't know if that's...
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Could bring some of that, not even consent.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Just so that we have the ability to move it a little well.
That's true, yeah.
Figure decisions are...
Yeah, I guess, yeah, the main thing would be whether, if, whether or not we're going to need to sell bonds for...
Yeah, I mean, that's a bond concept.
Oh, okay.
So, unless we're selling bonds, it doesn't really have any meaning.
Sell a bond, no. Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, got it. But is there any other kind of resolution you have to do so that you can be reimbursed? It's not bond, but, okay, you think we're good?
Well, I don't know, Madam Mayor, I don't know what the FEMA requirements are, but other than, I mean, the reimbursement, the type of reimbursement resolution you adopted tonight for the water treatment plant doesn't make any sense in this context.
I know, but is there something that we have to do so that we, other than keep track of our costs and submit them to FEMA, is there any other form or process that we need to be aware of?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the shorthand to that is no. We have, I've already documented what we have to date as well as, along with Public Works. Gary has been, I guess, instrumental in getting me a lot of those costs, so I'm working closely with him. That data has already been turned over to FEMA in a kind of a preliminary sense. It's being used now to make a, collectively make a decision as to whether or not Hennepin County will be included in that declaration. If they are, then essentially that process will start over in a very detailed fashion and then we'll be able to recoup those costs through that process. And so, I will work through that process step by step once that declaration is made. So, we're already in line for that to occur, once they make the declaration. If they don't make it, then at that point, we're, there won't be any reimbursement. But I'm being told that they're hopeful that that will happen, so I'm remaining optimistic.
Okay.
Paul, do you know what Shorewood's got in mind?
I think they're waiting to see what we do. I shouldn't say it that way, what they're going to do is they haul out a lot of tubus millions and I believe they're going to take, pull that material off remotely. They're more interested in long-term, looking at the long-term solution, so we don't have to keep doing this.
I think we are too.
Yeah, so they took care of their own, yeah, all that themselves.
Yes.
Okay.
But they didn't have the expense of the...
No, no, I just thought if you were going to do it and if they were looking for a contractor, if you get one contractor between both cities, you might give a little bit of a discount.
Yeah, I think their impact was a lot lower than ours were, so they handled it in their Public Works department.
Okay. All right, I guess our next item is the stormwater drainage priorities.
At the last, at the last meeting, council asked me to take a look at the priorities of the stormwater items that I prepared in a map format. The ones that I had on that, the items I had on that map, there were ten items, I actually added another one that you were aware of. And that's one of those that we'll have to take care of here in 2014. That was the, if you look back to the map, number eleven is that South Bay Drive sewer washout that we had.
Right.
Yeah, we are also working on a package to put that back together. I think the last update I gave you is that does not need to meet the criteria for a dam. That helps us out tremendously, it reduces the amount of design. I do have somebody taking a look at what we need to do in there to pack that material back in there so it doesn't do this again. Although, keep in mind, it was under some extreme conditions, but I understand from Public Works, we have had some erosion issues in that area before. So, we want to try to reduce that, there is a temporary pumping station that is, is a bypass pump for that section of sewer now. And we need to have that out of there, obviously before freeze-up. And we plan to have this one as well taken care of before that. Right now, we do not have an estimate of cost, but we are putting together a bid package to get that out for quotes. Most of these, I thought, were fairly high priority and that's why we put them on the list. And so, we did look at taking care of these between the fall of 2014 and the end of 2016, at least in a format where we can look at it and look at alternatives, where the council can decide whether we should go forward with it or not. I tried to break them up too on the categories such as localized flooding for property and our structure. So, Enchanted Lane is obviously the highest priority one on there. The second one, looking at the Morning View Drive, this is the Hoffman drainage problem we already looked at and we should be bringing back some alternatives for you yet here in the next month. So, that is progressing. There is also a very similar situation up on Hardscrabble Circle. That property owner that contacted us there, that's the Giorgini family, and it's very similar to the Hoffman family. I just put a brief description for you on each one of those together, so you can know who they are. And then there's Mr. Hosmer was in on the Jennings Cove Pond, that's another one we look at trying to resolve here in 2015. And then there's also another property owner, Mr. Engel, we met down on Halsted Avenue. That's a, there's an area there that is, I believe, zoned for multiple family or townhomes, a higher density, it's vacant land, but there's quite a bit of water that's going down through the property there, very tight corridors between the houses. And I believe in this last, at least this last June, they did experience some water in the construction through the garage and in the house. So, that was one that I also think we have to take a look at between 2015 and 2016. We looked at some erosion issues, the South Bay Drive washout, and I think there were some photos that I sent out or that Mike had sent out to each of you. That one is probably the worst one, the highest priority, especially because there's a sanitary sewer involved in that one. Another one is the Trillium Bay Stormwater Outfall, if any of you had a chance to go down and take a look at that. There's a good volume of material that got washed down the side slope. It's not, in my opinion, it's not affecting any structures nearby, but the longer we leave that, the more, the worse that erosion is going to become. That one has a very difficult access. It's going to be, it's not going to be an easy project to repair. The Game Farm Road erosion, that was the, there's a horse trail along the roadway that we are working with the property owner to try to regrade and redirect some water so that it doesn't go down the horse trail, wash it out, and it's happened repeatedly. I also looked at some storm sewer cover repairs. There's, again, the Morning View Drive, there's a storm sewer pipe that needs to be, it's basically collapsing on itself. There's the storm sewer in the street and then goes through between properties and that really needs to be replaced. We looked at lining it and it doesn't look like lining will be a good solution. There's also the Loring Acres Stormwater Pond, the outlet for that, there's again some storm sewer pipe that, that one might be able to be lined. It was plugged, I think Public Works spent a few weeks trying to get that one cleared. Do that, so it's working in a maintained fashion, but that one likely will be lined. And then the Highway Seven Marywood Lane Pond, although we did talk about this one a little bit, but that one is going to be a mind-blowing issue, so that one's really off our list. our list.
Can I ask you about, uh, going back to erosion on forty-four, um, is Hennepin County taking care of that, do you know?
Um, they've taken some temporary measures, they still have some things to do out there. I don't know what their status is on, on getting that complete, but that's Hennepin County, they would be do, doing that work.
Okay. But you haven't heard anything?
No.
Okay.
The one on Highway Seven in Marywood, what happened there?
It looks like what may have happened is there may have been some, uh, there's a, an old, uh, corrugated metal pipe underneath Highway Seven, and the, there's a connection point that wasn't very good on, uh, underneath the turn lane, and I don't know what the circumstance were behind it. It looks like the water that discharged through that corrugated pipe flowed outside the, the new storm sewer, it came out and washed out the material along the, uh, structure in the pond. So basically, when you looked at the, when you looked at the outlet structure for the pond, there was no soil around it, it just looked like a tower in the middle of the bank. So, uh, Public Works has packed that material back in, and then MINDOT was to address the, that connection there. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Reminder of upcoming meetings, is that you and Mike?
Yeah, I get to talk about one thing tonight. I haven't had many things on the agenda that have been just me. Um, we do have our next council meeting scheduled, uh, day after when, when it normally would